Good afternoon, welcome to the February 27th Scott WMO Watership Planning Commission meeting. I will call this meeting to order and our first item up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda in the meeting minutes. So first I'll ask, do we have any modifications we want to see to the agenda? And or the meeting minutes, we'll just do it all once. Hearing none, can we get a motion to approve the agenda as presented in the meeting minutes that were sent out?
This Commissioner Shay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second? Oh, thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius, I'll second that motion.
Wonderful, Vanessa.
Apologize for that. I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Veerling.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Wonderful, that has passed, so we can move on. Looks like Troy, you're up first with your SBCD report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Good afternoon. Just reading some highlights from your February report in the packet. Technical assistance, we're still hovering around that 170 to 180 active service requests and a little over 100 projects. We do, we are starting to see an uptick on that now. We're going to be doing some significant outreach work in terms of promoting some of the cost share funding we have available through the grants. So that effort will hopefully yield some results that we'll see in the near future and uptick in some of the project requests. Soil health and cover crop, we sent information out to a number of producers. We have a couple of dozen on our routine mailing list about the MDA soil health equipment grant. I think Commissioner Weaver, you had mentioned that at the last meeting. Something is available and we did get some interest from producers. I don't know if any of them are going to apply, but I know we are. We're looking for a grant to, or our application will be for you in a piece of equipment called a crimper roller and that's helped used for purposes of terminating cover crops. So we'll see where we fare with that. We received one new request for NOTIL and we also received a grant agreement or executed a grant agreement for the soil health cost share grant that came out from Bowser. So that was a little over $14,000 and we have we have a project lined up to use all of those funds as well. So we're happy about that. Clean water education program, so shall be put together a draft annual report and we met with all our partners back on February 14th and helped get input from our partners on priorities and and topics and programming that we want to prioritize for 2023. The information and feedback we received, we updated the proposed work plan and sent that out to all the partners to get a final feedback and then we'll finalize our work plan in the weeks ahead. We continue to work with the Mackin contractor on the WMO's WBF education program improvement project. We should be finishing that up this year. And we're ourselves at the Soil and Water creating an annual report, just as the WMO does. And so we continue to work on that for our 2022 accomplishments. An inventory and assessment, we continue to work on the Raven Creek Phase One PT map assessment model. So the whole process starts with collecting the data and we're putting all those inputs into the model so we can eventually run the model. Skip over livestock operation assistance buffer law, we had a half a dozen or so notices that went out. Potential violations, these are, we couldn't exactly determine whether or not they're fully compliant. Some were more obvious than others, but again, the process to get compliances to send out notices and work with them as our first step on a voluntary basis to get those back into what they should be. Native tree seed and plant sale program. So our program, which was traditionally just tree program, has expanded over the past few years to include both native plant and and also native seed sale. We have now separated those two aspects. So we start with our tree program that runs from January through end of April and then beginning in May, we do our live plant and seed sales. So we're in the middle of our tree sale component. Over 250 orders and 22,000 trees already. That was as of January, so that number has even gotten larger since then. Water quality groundwater and rainfall monitoring. Not a whole lot going on there, just reporting on the Credit River one, that's going to be the big project this year, of course. As you already know, we're beginning to set up the, getting the equipment prepared and setting up things at the Met Council lab so they can receive our samples and and log the correct information and have all the right billing. So that's all getting ready so that when we get our first snowfall, we'll be ready to hit the ground running, or snow melt rather. Prior Lake, we were working on and submitted the final report, which was for the 2020 to 22 Monastry train season. We still have two more seasons to go, but we put together a report summarizing all the, all the findings as of today. Precipitation, you can see the far right paired columns there. January was slightly above average here at the Jordan Field Office Station. Construction erosion settlement control, we're seeing a really, a really low volume of plan reviews. At least it was in January. I don't know what the uptick is going to be, if any, for February. Typically, we we'd see it start to increase at least by March. But as you can see, it hit rock bottom there in this past month of January. Wetland Conservation Act, typically not a very busy time of year, so you don't see a whole lot of activity there. We do have one enforcement non-compliance case, an individual built a driveway that was originally approved and did go through wetland and it was really low and did and often flooded. Just wasn't very convenient. It does access a residential home. And so he went and filled and built up the driveway and in doing so, filled some wetland adjacent to the driveway. So we're working with that individual to try to resolve that issue in compliance with the law. Equipment rental, as you can see, 2023 just added that year. We'll start filling that in in the months ahead. Probably starting in April, maybe May sometime. Cost share grant status, you'll see we have five different grant programs that we're working concurrently on within the WMO and Soil and Water Conservation District. These represent all the grant funds sources of of cost share. For Soil and Water, you see we have about 181,000 available and the WMO is 242,000 for a total of a little over $420,000 in available cost share. So we got a lot of, lot of money to push through and and be able market out there for projects. On the last page is a table representing actions our board took in February. Payments totaling a little, a little bit less than $17,000 total for five different landowners and three new applications totaling $18,950. Now with that, Madam Chair, I'll try to answer any questions if there are any.
Troy, any questions? Okay, hearing none, looks like you are up, Vanessa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Just a few updates for this month. Just real quick, if folks haven't been paying attention, there is again an increased elevated flood risk this year that has been increased again as of the last snowfall. That's really not that much of a surprise. We did see record amounts of snow for this late level of this late month in February. So that of course obviously increases the flood risk because of the snow melt potential. There is about five inches of potential snow water equivalent. So when you take all that snow and you melt it down, it becomes like a snow water equivalent. We have between four and five inches of snow water equivalent in the area, which is actually quite a lot. There's about a 95% confidence that there will at least be some minor flooding in the Minnesota River Valley at Savage this spring. With that being said, obviously, with a couple of years of drought, the rivers, wetlands and lakes have an increased capacity to take on additional flood storage. Should they be able to access it? We don't have too many ice jam issues in the county, but you know, should there be ice jams, that's still going to be a heightened issue again this year. In addition to that, you know, the frost depth actually isn't that deep right now. It's only probably about 10 inches. So that'll help hopefully if the ground can saw, you know, reasonably quickly. Maybe some more of that water will infiltrate and help kind of reduce the flooding. But anyway, it's all going to depend on kind of whether we get in March. So just kind of keep an eye out there. I know Commissioner Casilius mentioned already, this rainfall has already started causing havoc on her property. So we tend to see a lot of increased phone calls at this time of year and we are prepared to deal with those. Outside of that, sorry, Commissioner Casilius, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, no.
We just feel for you. Um, but yeah, we are, we're kind of prepared with that. Um. In addition to that, we did, of course, finish our annual grant reporting for Bowser and MPCA. One interesting piece that did come up this year is Bowser did mention that for our NRBG block grant, which is our shoreline wetland grant, local water management grant and septic grant. There is now a monthly status update you're supposed to report upon. That's not something we had done in the past, looking back. We've never had that before and since January was the first month of that block, that grant cycle, and we were obviously caught up in just doing our end of year grant reporting. We didn't quite catch that, even when you have no activity, which we had no activity. They do want you to now actually report that no activity. But it does sound like they're also trying to get rid of that, which would be nice because having to go in and having to report no activity on a grant is obviously time consuming and not very beneficial to anybody. So that was one little hiccup we had, but it is a minor one. We are now working on our annual report, which of course is due at the end of April, but it takes us quite some time to put together. Also finishing up end of year financials with the county here, both the Natural Resource Program and the SWMO has to go through obviously the end of year audit and financials. So we're working on that too. We bring those into the annual report and work plan, which we obviously bring to you every year. And then the county also has their KPIs and their performance indicators, which we have to update and present to the county as well. So again, this is obviously a big reporting time of year for us. If any of you have been checking the county's website, I know everybody jumps on that first thing Monday morning. We did get a request from the DNR to help promote awareness on the deer feeding ban and the wildlife feeding ban. Especially right now because of the increase in chronic wasting disease. So we just kind of put a shout out there and we have already received a couple of questions. There is a passion to feed wildlife because you care for them, but then there's also the downside to feeding wildlife when there's a really detrimental disease like chronic wasting disease. So that's one of the things we're working on. Should anybody have questions on chronic wasting disease and deer feeding ban? Ryan is our local expert here at the county and then obviously you can also reach out to the DNR. But should you get any questions about the deer feeding ban, we would recommend you have folks reach out to Ryan. He is a wealth of knowledge when it comes steer. I've learned a lot from him already in just a few few short days. But he is very knowledgeable, so and very helpful. Last couple of things, obviously, there's not a lot of reviews right now for permits, but we are getting again just an ongoing increase of of issues, concerns, requests for development work impact in flood plains. Our flood plain layer has changed our flood plain layer. Our flood plain boundaries have changed quite a lot in the county with the last update. So there still continues to be a pretty high level of of questions, concerns, things that folks want to do on flood plain. Didn't realize there was flood plain. What can they do? How do they get through that process? Not just, oh, now my house is in the flood plain, but hey, I really wanted to put a shed right here or tear down the shed and build a bigger one. Now that shed is going to be in the flood plain. You know, what do I do? So we get a lot of that right now, still getting quite a lot of that. And then the last update that I have for you right now is Troy, I thought for sure you'd mentioned this one. The SWCD and their wonderful effort to partner and continue just being there for all the different members of the county has graciously offered to take on ownership of the McMahon outlet. And so we can kind of move forward with that project. So the first, the next step is to again get that legislative sleeve change to change the name of the grant to the SWCD and then continue working forward from there. As you guys know, we were still working on producing a design in case there was an interested owner as well as for any other lakes that might have a similar concern since there wasn't a basis for a, an outlet design really readily available. So that is also a 60% design. So we will be having a meeting with the SWCD, the township board to kind of present that design. WSBR engineer will actually be there to answer questions and help kind of keep that moving forward. So and as you guys know, we still have $200,000 of the WMO's funds matched in our fund balance still set aside for the project in hopes, of course, I would always move forward at some point. So we still have that there. So with that, I stand for any questions?
Well, that is good news about McMahon. So yeah, good. Questions for Vanessa? Out of curiosity, does the SWCD own any other outlets?
No, we just have one structure at the wetland, Helena Wetland Bank. It's a not a structure on a berm, nothing like this really. But you know, we're familiar with the design, how it operates, what it's going to take to operate. So yeah. But this will be our first outlet structure, maybe only one, Vanessa? Ah, look at you.
I would hope, but you know, hopefully, you know, you never, you never want a lake to need an outlet, right? You mean, you always hope that there is a natural system that's in place that allows the the lake to function to meet the needs of the community in its natural state. Oh, once in a blue moon, you'll come across a lake though, like McMahon, which really just genuinely didn't have its own outlet. So yes, you would hope you don't have to encounter this because nature will have already provided a way, but sometimes we kind of got to help nature out.
Well, it's good news because I, I mean, there's a lot of work that was put into it up to that point. So to see it not go anywhere, that would have been a bummer. So.
Yeah. Yeah, it all worked out well, this was Shay and everything, you know, but it was just too big a thing for the lid, for the private homeowners and everything to take on all that legal responsibility. That's why it went the other way and turns out the county can own a, can own an outlet.
Yeah. All right, other questions, comments for Vanessa? We'll move on to ongoing business. Ryan, you were up.
Good afternoon, just a few updates for today. Our CIPs, they are moving along. So our Xanadu project, which is the one we're looking at instructing this fall, we should be receiving the 60% designs the next few weeks and then 90% are scheduled for April. So at the 60% phase, we can start doing the permitting and get the ball rolling on that just because at times that can take a little bit of time as well. And then we'll continue to obviously incorporate any, any items that the landowner might have. So I've been in contact with him. Sent him the plans. Just want to make sure that obviously the landowners who are doing the project as well, that they have some input into this. Certainly they know their land better than us and in certain routes, you know, where to go, where to maybe stage. This one's kind of nice because we just did a project upstream of it. So I think maybe our design consultant can do a little bit of copy and paste with access routes and things like that. So but, but like anything, there's obviously some nuanced items that we still have to work through on that one. The Pika Creek Ravine, that one, we received some conceptual designs and so I've got a meeting with SRF on Friday to go through those. So I'm in the process of reviewing what they've submitted. And basically this is, you know, the, what they're thinking might work for the design. So we'll go through that. And and at the next meeting, I'll be able to give a, you know, an update and where we're headed with that project a little bit, little bit more. We'll define it a little bit better. I don't know if this has ever been brought up at a WPC meeting before, but for a number of years, I've, I've had an interest in looking at fish diversity on Sand Creek. So for anybody that does not know, there is a fish barrier, pretty big one on Sand Creek. It's a, there's a dam in the city of Jordan. And just my observations of, you know, spending a lot of time on Sand Creek. I've just noticed that the diversity seems to be greater downstream of that dam than upstream. Downstream is obviously connected to the Minnesota River. And that dam, you know, provides a stopping point for fish kind of moving to and from the the river up upstream. And so I guess the idea was first, we have to see is that, is it accurate? You know, is there a difference in diversity? What are the pros and cons of of doing a fish ladder potentially or stocking upstream? I don't think that we would be pursuing, you know, the removal of of the dam. So I think we're just sort of looking at, you know, collect the data, review it and then see if there's some justification to look at it further about, you know, getting more diversity in the upper parts of Sand Creek. So I was given a referral by Interflue, so Interflue is our design consultant for one of our CIPs. And they had, I asked them if they did their survey and they did not, but they had a contact for me. So I reached out to Mount Hood Environmental. Now they have one representative in Minnesota, which is by that name, I want to make sure everyone knows that we do have somebody here in Minnesota that we'd be working with. And basically we made contact and we're getting a bid from them on potentially that work. So we do have funds set aside in our budget to do some survey work this year. It could be phased, I guess we'll have to see how it goes the first round. And if we need to do any additional monitoring, you know, in a future year before we'd have enough data to really understand what's, what's going on. He did send over some, some data that MPCA collected in 2001, I think it was, that they went out there and so I was surprised at some of the species that they found out there. You know, and others are just very common species that you would have thought in, in some that, you know, during the surveying, I would have thought were present in the stream and they were not. So so good information to collect, but I think it'd be good to get our own data on it and kind of set some parameters of where we want to do the collection as well. Last two items, so we are looking to do an extension to our current Watership Base Implementation Funding Grant. It is set to expire in December and so we've been working with our board conservationist and Sawyer and putting the wheels in motion on that. So I'm hoping I can get everything kind of sent off to her shortly. And and then I guess we'll go from there and and see if she's got any comments for us to address. But I'll basically be looking to extend that one year. So it ended December 31st of 2024. And last item, so we've got a new Watership Base Implementation Funding Grant, which would be looking to fund the Xanadu CIP that I mentioned earlier. That one, we've got our work plan ready to go. We're waiting on some rates to add into there before I can submit the work plan. And then also we've got to get the grant executed. So we've got a copy of that that went to review in our legal department. And there was just some very minor changes that I sent back to Bowser just to see if they'd be acceptable. And so we're just going kind of back and forth on that. And the contract is set to go to our board meeting on March 21st. So if it gets executed, we can submit the work plan and be good to go. By the, I think it was May was the deadline to get everything in. So we're, we're well ahead of kind of the the deadline to get everything submitted. So we're in good shape there. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Okay, hearing none, we can move on to Melissa's updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just moving my notes. Just a few things. So last Friday, I met with the DNR in the Cedar Lake Improvement District. Wanted to get all three organizations together to make sure we knew what the plan was for Cedar Lake for 2023. So the DNR has approved, we're going to go back to using Floridone for 2023. It's going to go in right after ICE OUT. It's a whole lake application. So we're going to, we're going to try that again in 2023. And then surveys, so I won't have to do a pre-treatment survey on Cedar because the whole lake is going to get treated. I will go out with the DNR late May, we're going to do kind of like a post treatment survey, check on how the curly leaf was affected and then and then it'll just be the WMO staff that'll do the July survey, kind of looking for the native plant distribution and variety. The DNR did hire somebody, but she's still really, you know, low on staff. So she's just trying to plan on some of them, some of the lakes, getting theirself on the schedule so that they know where they're going. We did apply for an AIS control grant for curly leaf back in 2022. I have not heard on that grant award. We submitted it for Odal, Thole and McMahon because we couldn't for Cedar because we had gotten a two-year grant award for Cedar that covers 2023. So I sent an email to the DNR just kind of trying to find out if we were part of that award or not. Watercraft inspections, I did receive a draft of the 2022 season report. I had a meeting last Friday with waterfront restorations. We kind of went over the report. There's just a couple minor things that need to be fixed. And then so I'll give you a presentation on kind of those major findings at the March WPC meeting. The Camp Program, Citizen Assisted Lake Monitoring Program, that's really run by the Met Council, but we participate in it. I reached out to all my lake volunteers that have been taking samples for us on their lakes in the past. Thank you to Commissioner Veerling for agreeing to do Thole again for 2023. I did get a response back from Cedar that that volunteer cannot do it in 2023. So I reached out to the Cedar Lake Improvement District to see if they could recommend anybody I could reach out to that might want to volunteer for that. And then my McMahon volunteer told me to check back with him this week, can't think about it. So I might be looking for a volunteer for McMahon as well. I'm not sure. So I'll check back with him later this week and see how he's feeling about sampling the 2023 season again. And lastly, the Elko New Market Engineer, while I was gone, sent out a draft of their ordinance changes they'd like to make to bring their ordinance in compliance with the MS4 updates that were needed. And now Scott County has already updated our ordinance with those required updates, but Elko had not. So I reviewed them. I had Megan Tosca, our engineer, review them. And then Vermillion staff in Dakota County also reviewed them as well because both organization, the city is within both organizations. So we're going to meet with them tomorrow, just kind of compare notes before we actually submit our official response to those changes. So that's all I have for updates. If anyone would like to see a few photos, I did put together a few photos. I was on vacation last month. My husband and I went to New Zealand. So if you are interested in seeing a few photos of that, some of my favorite ones, I'd be willing to share those.
I'd like to see a few and we're running this meeting pretty quick.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so this is Paha Beach. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So this is just one shot of Paha Beach. The interesting little story is we saw people walking way back here and then they would disappear. So we decided to follow them. When you go around this big rock corner, it opens up into this like secret little swimming area. It was just. Awesome. There was all these people back there. If we would have known that, we would have brought our suits to go back there as well. Okay, it's not advancing. When we tested this, I could advance it. Let me see.
I've noticed that too before with pictures, that sometimes, I don't know why, I wish I knew, but yeah, you can't, the arrows going back and forth are not present.
Well, okay, so then I won't show as many, but I'll show you a couple more. Now I have to open something else. Sorry, I'm trying to hurry with this. This is called Hookah Falls. It was by a city called. Apo, I think you pronounced it. It was on the North Island, but one thing that we noticed of all the waters in New Zealand. They were crystal clear, like this turquoise, crystal clear water. And we also noticed that. It was mostly pastureland. I didn't see any, any land that was tilled. Sorry, this makes it really awkward when I have to. Close and then open something back up again. So this was a hike that we took called Godly Head Track. It was south of Christ Church and it was just this. The watercolor was just awesome and I, I did not. Alter these pictures in any way, they served the true colors of what my camera. Took of that. Just a couple more. We did take the Milford Sound Cruise. And just the sheer size of being in that fjord was just. Pretty amazing. I'll share two more and I'll be done. So as we were leaving Fjordland National Park, there was a few sites to pull over and take pictures and. It's just. The natural features of that whole area are just amazing. And I'll share one more. Almost there. We also stayed one night in Mount Cook National Park, and so on the way there, there was different spots to, to pull over and take scenic pictures and it was just. Very beautiful landscape there. That's all I have.
Yeah, beautiful. It is kind of surprising if you said you didn't edit the photos at all, that's crazy that that's just what it looks like. I mean, the water, it just looks like it's so pristine.
One more, one more, just quick comment. So we, one night when we were in Queenstown. You know, the, the water was right up to a busy boardwalk, full of restaurants and everything, and you would think. Looking at that water, it'd probably be pretty murky and dirty. You'd walk right up to it and it was crystal clear. It was just amazing, right next to a city like that, so. Pretty cool, Melissa. Thanks for sharing those.
Yeah, they're really beautiful. I love the fact that the woman, a woman who works for the watershed district takes pictures of water, you know, it would be like. Bars, restaurants, whatever. They're great, though. Looks like a wonderful trip. All right, very cool. Thank you for sharing. Okay, next up, one watershed, one plan update. So I can give a quick update on our last meeting. I'm just gonna share the document that we worked through at the last meeting. Hopefully I can do this. Let me know if you can't see it. So they sent out this memorandum that talked about how the advisory and steering committees. Looked at prioritizing locations for, for the, the plan. And then the, at our policy committee, we essentially just talked about those and then approved them. So that's kind of what the meeting was about. So I just wanted to let everybody know what, where we're at with that. So first they talked about how they prioritized. Things, so when we talk about lakes, they, they looked at the lakes a different way and kind of said, okay, which ones are really. High for recreational value and public health, which one have the nearly barely status, which means they. Are nearly at, are almost, are just made the, the MPCA requirements for. You know, a clean lake. And then again, the, the connectivity to the nearly barely lake. So this is kind of how they, they prioritize by looking at these. And then also. Looked at, you know, what they were impaired with. And when they came down to it, the lakes that they wanted to prioritize, you can see here, so it would be these lakes and their direct watersheds. And those essentially just get called out in the plan to say, you know, these are going to be our priority lakes. So when we start moving forward with trying to make decisions about how to spend funds, you know, we look at issues in these lakes. We talked about streams, which streams to prioritize, and it really came down to sediment and other pollutant concerns. So kind of the same thing, they went through an exercise and talked about, you know, where do they see more sediment? Where do they see, see issues with pollutants? And, and then they prioritized all the streams that they looked at, and the ones that came out on top were these. And Eagle Creek, I'll just call out separately because that was a trout stream. Right, I thought they said that somewhere in there. It's only trout stream in the watershed, from what I understand. So that's why that one was included into, but. So again, so when it comes down to where we're going to put our funding and where we're going to put our efforts over the next ten years, it would be in the watersheds in these streams. And then we talked about. More background information. Groundwater was next. Oh, this is more, oh, just more background information for how they prioritized. Then we got into groundwater and. We looked at. Drinking water supply areas where the nitrate levels were higher. And again, just came down to these, makes sense for, but I think the groundwater, we decided to do everywhere. Can you correct me if I'm wrong there, Melissa? So I think they, they gave us this information, but then I think the decision was is that we still decided that just makes sense to. Put groundwater efforts everywhere, so. Yeah, I know I'm going through this really fast, but. It was kind of interesting, you know, when we came in and talked about it, it was more just like they updated us and said, okay. Now vote and decide that this is what we want to do. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion on our end at the meeting. I didn't really think it was going to go that way when, you know, we started out the process, I thought that, that. We'd have more input on the policy committee, so. Anyway, I was just kind of surprised at how the meeting went and, and it was fine. I mean, there, there was, there was a little bit of discussion in the group on, on some of this. That I can get into too, if folks are interested, but. Yeah, that's kind of where it's at. There's, we started the discussion on storage a little bit and how we want to prioritize storage, but. That was going to be held over for the next. Advisory and steering committee meetings, they would be talking about storage and what decisions they wanted to make on storage if they wanted to prioritize certain areas of the watershed, so. So that's all I have. I know it was really quick, but I, I don't know how much you guys want to hear about this or. If you want more detailed information, I mean, we could send out this memorandum, I assume, if, if folks wanted more details on how the decisions were made too, so. Questions?
Rita, Rita, this is Commissioner Casilius. I, I would like to see a copy of it if you could send it to me by email so I could read it.
Yep, I can do that. Or Melissa, can I have you do that? Thanks. Okay, well, then that's that. We can move on to new business. And it looks like we have a guest speaker that will be working with Ryan to talk about wetland restoration repair.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, so first, I'll kind of go through the memo that we created and then I'll introduce Aaron, why not? And then also we've got another guest speaker, David Zach. So this kind of came together a little bit later last week, and so Aaron was in the process of. Figuring out if he wanted, or if, you know, folks would be available from certain organizations that are involved in this project. David is a landowner on this wetland. And so that's why it's just Aaron's name on it right now, because we're still kind of figuring out. Who, who else would be kind of available to, for the meeting, so. First, before I get into the memo, just want to show everyone where this project is, so you've got kind of a proximity. About where it's located in the county. So it's kind of down here on the southern end of the county. And this particular wetland is actually in a development, so it's Country Hollows is the development name. And this is the wetland itself that we're going to be talking about. So just kind of wanted to show you whereabouts it was. It's no small wetland by any means. And so we'll kind of get into the details of, of why this project is for you today. So let me stop sharing. Screen and we'll shift over to the memo. All right, so this is just an informational item, so it's not an action item. And why we're bringing it to you today is that we've been in contact with Aaron. Since last year about this project and we think it's, it's a very unique, different. Project in some aspects of what we work on. And so that's why it was worth kind of highlighting and kind of showing you where the project is today and what we are looking to do. So this project is kind of a collaboration between several different organizations. You've got Aaron, who's kind of leading some parts of the project from a design aspect. So he's a professional engineer who is the owner of Field to Flyway. And you've got Cedar Lake Township involved. They actually own quite a bit of the land that that wetland sits on. And then you've got the adjacent landlords who also own parts of the wetland. And the, one of the bigger organizations too is the Scott and Lassure Waterfowlers Organization. So they are the ones that are, have been going to get funding for, for the project itself and. They've been approved for funding in Rice County, a similar project, but they are kind of looking. To get funding for this particular project in Scott County. Just looking at the aerial photography, it looks like somewhere around the nineteen seventies that this wetland. Was restored, maybe Aaron or David knows a more exact date in there too. But in two thousand and five, there was a permit that was issued to do some repair work, so. The outlet structure for this wetland has, has been. That obviously failing because you can see water in it, but with nothing being done, it sounds like it would imminently at some point fail. In order to actually apply for the funding, to do the construction and the full design. There's some preliminary work that needs to be done, and that's sort of the, the part of it that we're talking about today. This project would fit within our goals in our water management plan. Because this would be basically a restoration of a wetland. It, it's already restored, but without intervening, it would fail. And so that's kind of why this is important, you know, wetlands are a practice that we're really trying to push hard. In, in something of this capacity, we would certainly not want to see it get drained permanently. So one piece of this is that for our two thousand and twenty three budget, we do not have a line item for this project. So as you know, everyone here is familiar with. You know, we utilize the soil and water to do a lot of this work. However, in this case, Aaron is already involved. He's got a relationship with the Waterfowlers Association. He's very passionate about this project. And so it's a little different in that aspect, and that's why it didn't fit within our caution program, because this is all the preliminary work. That needs to be done, and, and that's normally where we've got the soil and water. To kind of help with that part of it. But what we're looking at doing is a budget amendment in April. It's, it's actually only partially related to this. It's, it's for other aspects of our budget, but one thing that has changed since the budget was set is that we had six hundred thousand set aside for our CIPs. In twenty twenty three. Now, if the water, watershed-based implementation funding does get approved. That's over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that would be used towards that CIP, the Xanadu CIP. So that does free up some funds for us to look at other projects like this one. And potentially set aside funds to actually, to, to offer assistance for it. So I just want to give kind of that, the context and that background in your packets. Then you've got some kind of background information that Aaron provided about, you know, where the structure's at, what's needed. And then the cost estimate for doing all the work. So what we're looking at here for the preliminary design work would be twenty thousand. The soil and water has offered to help with the survey, so we're still sort of in conversations about. You know, whether they would do it or Aaron would do it or however that would go. But really what we're looking at is, you know, the, the potential of up to twenty thousand dollars for. For this project to kind of get going and then look to get funded largely by the. The Lissard Sam's. Outdoor Heritage Funding, so. I've given, I've given a long-winded introduction to it, so I guess I will turn it over first to. Aaron, and then Aaron, if you wanted to have David speak at it and all as well.
That sounds good. Thank you for having me, Madam Chair and council members. Like Ryan said, my name is Aaron Wynett. Have a company called Field to Flyway Engineering. Trying to figure out how to get my presentation up here.
So there should be on the bottom, Aaron, do you see a green? And right in the middle, there you go.
Ryan, see that all right?
Yes.
Well, Field to Flyway is a company that my wife and I started a few years ago. We both grew up in New Prague, graduated high school from there, and now we live up between Alexandria and Fergus Falls. Been doing this sort of work for eleven years, worked for Ducks Unlimited for most of that time and just recently. Decided to go out on my own and start a new endeavor, so this is it. Well, like was said, it's, it's in Country Hollows Wetland, our Country Hollows Development. It's fifty-four acres in size, about a three hundred acre watershed. Depth is about four and a half feet deep. The current outlet structure is on the northeast side of the wetland. An embankment was built. And a fixed crest structure was installed. Water runs to the east through a series of wetlands and then ultimately ends up in Potter Creek. As you can see, water clarity, water color, there is nothing like New Zealand. And a bunch of floating bog blows around in the wind and causes more disruption to the ecology of the basin. Oh, that green water color is attributed to high water. That allows invasive rough fish and fathead minnows to overwinter. Those rough fish feed on the aquatic vegetation. They uproot it and don't allow anything to grow. While they're feeding, a whole bunch of sediment and nutrients gets into the water column. With no vegetation, you have no habitat for the invertebrates and they become easy prey for the fathead minnows that are out there. So you have no invertebrates to control the algae population and then a excess nutrients. You get these big algae blooms, which decreases the water quality clarity. And so no light can penetrate through that water column to allow new vegetation to grow. And you just get this cycle that ends up with a pea-soup green color water with nothing out there, no ecological value. So what we do is called a drawdown, which kills the rough fish out there, allows those bottom sediments to consolidate. Emergent plants can grow from the existing seed bank. It provides flood storage. And it just mimics the natural drought cycle that wetlands need to go through. And then we would do this about every five to ten years. It would be on a controlled basis to minimize downstream impacts. Once we get the water to come back, new rooted aquatic vegetation grows and becomes established. That holds those bottom sediments in place so you don't get that wave action. It also increases the habitat for the aquatic invertebrates. And both the plants and the invertebrates provide food sources for waterfowl and other birds. And then the decreased nutrients and increased invertebrate population decrease algae. So you have this clean, clear water that's full of life, not quite what New Zealand is like, but we try to get as close as we can. So just an example, this is a project I worked on in my last career. You can see that pea-soup green color. This has got no emergent vegetation around the outside. So we did a drawdown out there. After that, when the water returned, clear water. And you can even see, this is all brand new emergent vegetation that in this case helped buffer that shoreline from eroding. This is just drawing of the current structure that's out there. It was designed and built in nineteen sixty-eight by the Soil Conservation Service, which is predecessor to the United States Department of Agriculture and their Natural Resource Conservation Service. It is a fixed crest corrugated metal pipe outlet structure. And with the embankment that's built and then a ten-foot wide spillway along the north side of the embankment. As I said, this was built in nineteen sixty-eight, so it's a fifty-five-year-old structure. This is what it currently looks like. This was taken last spring. Structure is completely plugged. And talking to David Zach, he's basically put Band-Aids on it twice since he's lived there. I believe in two thousand and five, but I'll let him elaborate on that. So with that plugged outlet structure, this is a picture of the emergency spillway that now is pretty much the primary spillway. Had to be reinforced with riprap to stabilize it so it won't erode away. So to allow the drawdown, we would like to put in a new variable crest water control structure, something similar to this. This is a sheet pile structure with a stoplog bay right here. So you can put, what we're called boards in to raise or lower the water level. Got a catwalk here to safely put those in or take them out. And then you have a, a weir section. So as the water comes up, it can overflow this area. These are very simple. If they do get plugged up, you can bring in an excavator and very easily clean them out. This would be another option. This is similar concept to what's out there now. But again, just have this, this area is your stoplogs. And this one has a pipe that goes through the embankment. So that embankment could be used for crossing equipment or whatever in the future. This one also has sheet piling just to prevent water from moving through the embankment. So these structures are durable, they're long-lasting. The current structure that's out there, you figure has a lifespan of twenty-five to thirty years. It's fifty years, fifty-five years old now, so it's well past its useful life. These ones are anywhere from fifty, seventy-five hundred year lifespan on it. So since they are expensive, we'd potentially be looking at going after Lissard Sam's Alter Heritage Grant. If you're not familiar with those, it's approximately a hundred and thirty million dollars a year awarded to forty different applicants. For fiscal year twenty-three, which is their current funding cycle, we helped Scottley Sewer Waterfowlers submit a Lissard Sam's Alter Heritage Fund Grant. They were recommended for six hundred and three thousand dollars worth of wetland restoration work on wildlife management areas and that'll take place in Rice County. This project was on our project list, but the staff at the Alter Heritage Council recommended that we take it out. Since Scottley Sewer Waterfowlers is a small organization that hasn't put in a grant before. They just recommended that we work on something smaller and simpler so that, so that we can show some success and then come back to them in the future. Well, like Ryan said, kind of here to get some of that preliminary work so we can answer some of those questions that the DNR had. Know that this project is ready to go and can move forward through the process if they were to fund it the rest of the way. And like Ryan said, our cost estimate was twenty thousand dollars. And then Lissard Sam's would hopefully cover the remaining four hundred thousand dollar cost to finish out the engineering and do the construction out there. David, if you're on, if you wanted to say anything.
Well, Aaron, you just called me the other day, so I just wasn't sure what to expect. I've lived out here since two thousand and two and have been dealing with the issue of the water. Kind of patchworking that back waterway. It's actually in two thousand and five, I said, I saw a permit from the DNR. I, I applied for that. It took about, because they're so backed up. It took almost eight months to have them come out. And then the approval was quite a bit of money. So the, the, it went from about four feet to about eighteen inches that year. So I paid out of pocket because there was nobody really to lean on to help out. I went to the township and they denied it. And so I just paid out of pocket. It happened again. Obviously, I have vested interest since I'm, I, my backyard is that watershed. But it is fifty-some acres. It's, it actually holds quite a bit of water, waterfall. But it is very, there's floating bogs. It's very silty. I've been in there. It's probably three foot of silt. So I never had anybody, I never knew where to turn until Aaron approached me and some other people about this. And he's kind of taken it from there. So, which I appreciate, and I know it's a process and a cost. But I guess that's to my two cents on the project. I think, I mean, it's not gonna, eventually that, that waterway is gonna not be there anymore. You know, eventually there's just no, nobody else out there that's going to be funding this project besides me.
David and Aaron, thank you both. So yeah, I guess if there's any questions that anybody has, you know, just to kind of reiterate, so this is just an informational item. Excuse me, it's a unique project. You know, the, the basis of what it is is very much, you know, what we do. It's unique in the fact that you've got so many different people collaborating on this. And so we thought it was worth kind of doing a presentation, introducing you to some of the folks that are involved and kind of shedding some light on, on what we would like to do. And so I guess with that, we'll stand for any questions anybody has.
Would the WMO be the applicant for the LSA, LSOHC funds?
Good question, Madam Chair. So it would be the Scott La Sure Waterfowlers Association, actually. So and as Aaron was showing there on that last slide, it's a pretty good deal for us to be involved. We, we pay twenty thousand and then they would potentially go out and get a grant to cover the four hundred thousand that they're kind of looking at for the long-term, you know, project construction and, and maintenance of it.
And they would also be providing some matching funds for these projects as well. Both in kind and cash contributions. And we've got with the current grant, we've also worked with the New Prague Sportsman's Club and Tri-Lakes Sportsman's Club, Dome by Shieldsville. And both of those clubs provided some funds for this go-round of funding that we currently should be receiving.
And then do you know for the design, would you be aiming to hit the current elevation? So where the overflow is right now? Or would you, would you want to bring it back down to the initial elevation of where that pipe was at?
So DNR has a, a set elevation that we would have to maintain. And that's
Okay.
But we would just temporarily draw it down for, I think state statute is up to two years. There is some concern from some of the township officials about bringing the water down and then water not returning and then just having a big cattail basin. But, you know, like Dave has said before, if it weren't for him, that's all that would be out there right now anyways. So we're trying to get ahead of that. So Dave doesn't have to keep digging into his pockets and fixing something that benefits everybody.
Yep.
By benefit, by benefiting everyone, what do we mean? Is this something that it's, it's a public hunting place that people can go? Or is it just a little neighborhood or not little, but a smaller neighborhood park? When we say it's going to benefit everyone with the money going to be put into this, what does that mean, everyone?
Well, you would have some flood storage, you'd have cleaner water. I believe the township does not allow public hunting on that. But you could go canoeing. Any sort of other public recreation out there, if you see if I can.
There is a public path out there, so you could literally, people have access to it. It's a, it would be considered a park. So between the two ponds there, that's, that's a wildlife path. That you can come down and park and, and people come all the time and walk through there or canoe in there or kayak. And then it, and then it runs off the watershed, the outlet channel at the top actually runs into some other wetland areas. So that water gets moved around to different wetland areas.
And I believe the, the township park encompasses some area up here as well. But that is, I believe, just accessible. You know, if you were to boat across the, the wetland.
The developer that gave it, the township took it over and the, the developer gave it to the township. So the township actually manages the area. And the township committed funds also to the project. So.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Shea, and part of the, the biggest thing too is, you know, we're driven by runoff control in water quality. And, and that's probably some of the bigger aspects of this project that it would be benefiting the watershed as a whole. Oddly enough, they're just literally off the screen here to the east. There was a wetland in a similar situation that we actually helped fund. I think it was in two thousand and seventeen-ish, somewhere around that timeframe, where old structures failing and, you know, the, the demise of it was imminent. So we helped reconstruct and, and repair it. So we, we maintained the benefits that that wetland's providing.
And then I will just add to that, Madam Chair and Commissioners, because these are all really great questions. Looking back to our watershed management plan, because obviously everything we do has to be connected to their plan and our priorities. Brian mentioned in the memo that this is a level four project. So remembering that we do out identify which types of projects we will pursue or may pursue or may consider pursuing and what those look like and at what level. And this one does qualify as a level four project. So these are projects that the SWMO is willing to support technically and financially, but we're not going to lead implementation. So they're kind of, they're not a tier one project for us. These are like a tier two project for us. In this case, tier two projects, the proposed project, you know, kind of supports the goals of the SWMO, but doesn't quite rank for a tier one, so it might not have full public access. It might benefit a smaller selection of residents. But overall, in the county, it provides a measurable benefit that is identified in our plan. And we can definitely also come back to you with a kind of a, a better explanation as to kind of where this project fits in. Because these are all really great questions, but this would qualify as a level four project for the WMO.
I, I would just add to that maintaining and utilizing storage we already have is way less expensive than putting in new storage. So as we start to get watershed-based implementation funds and work on that plan and get storage money, it is way less expensive to do work like this. So I would even add, as if you look at the design, if there's a way that you can modify the design such that you can add more temporary storage and bounce for flood reduction.
Yeah, that is one thing that Ryan had brought up in our initial conversation.
Yeah.
This is a public water basin. So obviously working with the DNR
Yeah.
on that, on that bounce in storage.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'm curious, talk a little bit more about the requirement that you need to do some smaller projects first in order sort of to, I don't know if it's just to prove your abilities or the, the soundness of this plan. I just, I'm, I'm curious to have a few more details around that requirement.
So Scottley Sewer Waterfowlers started in two thousand and nineteen. They used to be a part of what was called Minnesota Waterfall Association, which was a statewide nonprofit. In two thousand and nineteen, that disbanded. And the group of volunteers in New Prague wanted to continue to see basically their legacy live on through that, that club. So it's a new club, it's got a very dedicated group of volunteers. And when we went after these grant funds, I guess the, the council was just a little nervous with biting off a complex project like this without any background in it. Obviously, my background, I've been doing projects like this, you know, for over a decade. But that particular group hasn't done a large, complex project like this. It includes developing a lake management plan, going through a, it's called, it's state statute one oh three G point four oh eight where, which allows temporary drawdown on public basins. Where you have to develop that lake management plan, you have to have seventy-five percent of the landowners approval of the project. Have to have a public hearing and then ultimately the, the DNR decides whether the project can move forward like as proposed. So it's a lot of steps to go through and they were just a little bit concerned with being able to, to go through that.
And does this group have other smaller projects in the offing that will help them to do that then?
So in the current grants, we have three wildlife management areas that contain several small to medium-sized wetlands that are either drained or they might have been restored back in the seventies. And the embankments have washed out with the numerous hundred-year flood events that we've witnessed in the last twenty years. So kind of going back and rejuvenating those basins or restoring really small. Or restoring really small basins that were never um restored on the landscape when these properties were purchased in the seventies and eighties. So there are a lot simpler projects, they're um wetlands that are fully contained within a wildlife management area. Since they were restored, they are not considered DNR-protected waters, so the permitting is much simpler on those. And that's why they wanted us to to focus on that, to kind of show that, yes, we have, we we can do this. Scottly Sewer County, our Scottly Sewer Waterfowlers is capable of delivering a. A large Lassard Sam's Alter Heritage Fund Grant, um, I believe it was in twenty twenty, they did receive a. Twenty-five thousand dollar conservation programs legacy grant, uh, they worked with US Fish and Wildlife Service. To restore some small wetlands on a new uh wildlife management area just south of Montgomery.
Okay.
So they're getting their feet wet and uh we're just trying to keep this train moving along and do some good work on the landscape.
Great, thank you.
And Madam Chair, I think you might be a little pressed for time too, as I understand it.
I am, yep, I'm gonna have to jump off in the next couple of minutes here, um, I just wanted to clarify, so next steps, this is just information, so you'll be coming back. For a vote, when will we be recommending to the county board that that or the WMO board that this be funded?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll take it, sorry, um, as Ryan mentioned, uh, Madam Chair Commissioners, uh, we do have to bring an amendment to our budget forward. Um, in order to accept the watershed-based implementation funding grant for Xanadu of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and move some funds uh to better utilize another couple of grants. So rather than do multiple budget amendments each year, we're just gonna do one omnibus budget amendment to bring to you. And this will be part of that, uh, because it is a a worthy project for your consideration. So we will be bringing this forward as well as the other two components and one large budget amendment. And at that point, you will then um decide whether or not you want to make a recommendation to the board. Um, to approve this preliminary, uh, sorry, this twenty thousand dollar um potential grant. So you will have a chance at that point in time, and yes, it would be a recommendation to the WMO board at that point. This is just information at this point.
Yep, yep.
Kind of a preliminary, getting all those great questions, if there was more information you needed, right, we would bring that to you um next month then. Um, to make sure that if it's something you're going to deliberate and make a recommendation for, uh, we just want to make sure that uh all of your questions have been addressed and.
Yeah. If there are further questions, I would encourage people to continue going, I'm gonna have to jump off though, so, um, I will. Open up it for questions again, if, because this has been a great discussion, I think.
It is, um, Madam Chair, the one thing we would need to do, since there are no, there are actually no other items on the agenda. So we could in fact do a motion to adjourn, um, otherwise you would need to turn it over to any of the other commissioners, um. Commissioner Casilius.
That's why I figured I'd I'd check and see if there are any last questions, and it doesn't sound like there are, so, um. So then I think at this point, we will just look for a motion for to adjourn tonight, and then we'll be all wrapped up.
Commissioner Shea will make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius, I'll second that motion.
All right.
Do roll, thank you Commissioners, Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Mr. Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shea.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil. I know Commissioners Phil's having some technical difficulties, so.
Yeah, he, yeah, he might not be able to respond.
You still get your majority, I was saying, I think we have majority anyway, so, um, all right, we'll see everybody next month, thanks.
Great, thank you.
All very much, thank you, Aaron, thank you, David.
Thank you for listening to us. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, thanks for your help, guys, appreciate it.
You're welcome.